Okay, you're all set.
Fantastic. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back. I feel like it's been a little while. Has this this meeting been publicly noted?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Well, welcome to the trustees. Welcome to members of the public for tonight's Public Works Committee meeting. We are here to discuss two items. The first one being agenda item is we are receiving an update regarding staff actions taken in response to the July 3 transportation and public or transportation and parking request program submission regarding East Capitol Drive modifications. And the second item is consider recommendation to authorize engineering study for WISDOT consideration of requested modifications. For the first agenda item regarding East Capitol Drive modifications, do we have is Lee Anne Bushlick available to kind of review those updates?
I am here and I certainly can. If you'd like me to go through them one by one, I can certainly do that.
I would love. I think that'd be great. I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Leanne.
Staff received the traffic or excuse me, transportation and parking request program submission on July the 3rd. Since that time, we have reviewed each of the 13 items. In a number of cases, because of the corridors connecting highway status, they require some input and or review for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. So the first item that was noted on the request related to pruning to reduce site obstructions in the corridor, signs and signals. So that work was completed on July 31st by DPW staff. The second item related to what was termed a refresh of the pavement marking crosswalks in the corridor. Those actually were marked in epoxy in 2022 at significant cost, if you recall. I did after reviewing have a conversation with the contractor and provided a written notification that we were invoking the warranty clause on the contract because of what I consider to be where excessive where beyond what would reasonably expected within a year's period. So we are working with the contractor on on how to rectify that issue. If you've looked at it, it's not consistent. There are some areas that are performing as expected and there are some areas that in certain specific locations, the marking has completely delaminated from the pavement. So again, working through a warranty issue on that. And I will keep you posted on what what proposed plan of action is submitted by the contractor and what our staff at Department of Public Works finds to be an acceptable response. The third item related to the creation of a program that would provide flags for pedestrians so that that they could carry as they were crossing Capitol Drive or one of the side streets to draw greater attention to them from motorists. Assistant Manager Anderson did the the research and the legwork on that program, but we are at this point in time estimating a fiscal outlay of about $1,200 to get that started, I think, but what needs to be considered is a an implementation plan and some policy guidance should be drafted and approved by the board to get that moving. The Department of Public Works 2024 capital budget submission included $200,000 in funding to complete the remark of Capitol Drive that was started last year, as I mentioned. Last year was crosswalks and stop bars. We are proposing to complete the remarking, which would include all lane delineations, parking stall delineations, bike lanes, et cetera. The the traffic or transportation and parking request submission asked for additional pavement markings that would include pedestrian crossing ahead markings that could be incorporated into that that submitted budget request with minimal additional cost. We're estimating that in the range of $5,000 for the initial installation and then, of course, $5,000 to re-market probably every two to three years. The estimated, the fifth item in the submission was the installation of crosswalk signage at all of the intersections. You recall the board approved a similar request on Lake Drive a number of years ago. We are estimating approximately $5,500 to install those signage and posts. This isn't a cost that can be absorbed in our operating budget. In fact, our entire signage budget for the year is about that amount. So we would need to identify an alternate funding source. The sixth item relates to the reduction of speed. As noted in the memo, because of the connecting highway status of this corridor, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation has jurisdiction on the establishment of speed limits. If the board determines that it wishes to pursue a reduction in that speed limit, WISDOT staff has indicated that an engineering study that would provide justification for such a reduction must be submitted with any request for that speed reduction. The seventh item related to changing the school zone from when children are present to a specific timed zone. In fact, WISDOT has informed us that 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 would be in conflict with the the federal guidelines related to school zones and they would not permit such a change. The eighth item related to the removal of a number of crosswalks in the corridor. WISDOT staff indicated to us that their removal of crosswalks generally conflicts with their multimodal approach to roadway design and that it would be unlikely to be approved. But they said we could, the village certainly could request that they review it. Again, it would have to include an engineering evaluation that demonstrated justification for the request. The ninth item in the resident request related to how crosswalks would be any crosswalk removals would be treated. There were some suggestions for blocking those crosswalks using planters or other objects. WISDOT has indicated that if permission were given to remove marked crosswalks, those crosswalks would have to be eliminated, meaning concrete pavement removal of the the curb ramps, the pedestrian plates. It would not be sufficient simply to block that with a planter or some other objects. It would have to be removed and replaced with a full face curb. The 10th item in the request related to signage that instructed pedestrians that they must cross at marked crosswalks. We estimate that cost at about $2,000 for the initial installation. Again, a funding source would need to be identified for that. The 11th item related to the additional, the addition of two RFB units, which is rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which we have deployed at a number of locations in the village to aid pedestrians and bicyclists, excuse me, as they cross at marked crosswalks. In fact, when we were reviewing that with WISDOT, they did inform our staff that the the current configuration and installation is not up to federal standards. Right now, there is only a single unit in the median. And to comply with federal standards, there needs to be a total in in this configuration of three units, one at each curb and then one in the median. Those would have to then be all connected, push button activated, so that all three would work in sync. Right now, we are waiting on a quote from Tapco, but based on our previous installations and knowledge of those, I'm loosely estimating 15 to $20,000 for the completion of that. As we get, as I get to the end, we'll talk about funding sources. And so we would have two options for this. This could be listed with the other things that the board may wish to pursue this year, or we could include that as an addition to the department's capital budget. But we we really are in a position where this needs to be addressed and corrected. The 12th item relates to a request for the installation of physical barriers in the medians. As I understand it, these would be more decorative iron fencing or some type of a raised planter that would prohibit pedestrians from crossing through those areas and funnel them or make sure that they're crossing at marked crosswalks. Again, because of their the connecting status and some requirements of WISDOT, they have indicated that the Wisconsin Department of Transportation would need to review that request. Again, would have to be justified within an engineering evaluation. As would item 13, which was a request for the installation of temporary bollards and perhaps pavement markings. You don't recall if there was not a picture in the memo, but you you've seen them. The city of Milwaukee has installed a number of these in locations throughout the city. So I'm I'm sure you've probably seen them. Those are, in a nutshell, my understanding of the items in the request. As you'll note, the memo does offer the option of utilization of remaining ARPA funds for anything that the the board would wish to implement in 2023. Any other items could potentially, as I mentioned, be included as modified submissions to the department's capital budget. This is a committee review this evening. Should the committee look favorably on any of these items, it would be staff's recommendation that a a committee recommendation then be forwarded or be made this evening and forwarded to the full board at your meeting of the first meeting of September.
Thank you, Leanne. That was very comprehensive. Really appreciate. Really appreciate all of all of that and all that work that you put into these requests from the public. So thank you so much. I'd like to take some questions now from trustees. Trustee Baldoff, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification, Leanne. Thanks for all of this information. So you said kind of at the end of this, a preliminary estimate for an evaluation is approximately $50,000. So would we need to do, is that $50,000 that we would spend with Strand and that takes eight weeks? And then the and then WISDOT reviews that for four to eight weeks?
That is correct.
So we can't, we have, if we want to move forward with WISDOT, we have to spend the 50K on this, no matter what. We can't just make a request of WISDOT.
That is what I, that is what I have been told, yes.
By WISDOT?
Yes. And and I would note that the $50,000 would be, and and that's based on a review of the the we'll call it the specifications that WISDOT staff provided to our staff. The the items, the scope of work for that particular engineering review based on the known items that require their evaluation. So I I'm pretty confident in that $50,000 number.
Okay.
But I would also note that that does not guarantee anything. That $50,000 pays for the time that strands traffic engineers would spend reviewing the requests, comparing them against warrants and the federal manual and determining if, in fact, those requests would require or or would be justified based on, you know, that context. If Strand finds that it's not, then we could still submit it to a staff, but I would suspect that that probably would then not take four weeks.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I just wanted to clarify, you know, because obviously, you know, WISDOT doesn't have the budget to do the engineering study for every municipality who wants a potential change. Like, I get it. They don't have the budget and the staff, so I get that we have to have skin in the game to to get that done. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly. So thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Baldoff. Trustee Lynn, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, a couple of couple of notes and and bear with me because I'm a little all over. There's a lot of stuff here. So thank you, Leanne, for putting together that detailed list and and thank you as well to all of the volunteers who put together the list in the first place. Just a couple of things. So with regards to the study, when I was back in 2018, I think it was on the pedestrian bike safety committee, when we reduced Lake Drive from four lanes down to two, WISDOT made us do the exact same thing, get a study and then could ask them for permission. And at that time, I think the study only cost us like seven grand. And I only bring that up because obviously the scope was much smaller than these different things that we're looking at. So theoretically, if we reduce the scope of what the engineers were going to look at, theoretically, that cost would go down. Is that my correct understanding? That 50K could be reduced to some degree if we have them look at less stuff, basically.
That that certainly seems reasonable or rational to me. I did not specifically pose that question to Strand, but but it seems like, you know, if A equals B, right? It seems reasonable.
Okay. So that's, you know, that's one thing to keep in mind and that I'm keeping in my mind at least. And then a couple of things on a few of these items. So with regards to, I think the first one I'll I'll pull up is the pedestrian flag program. So that was something that I actually personally recommended to the pedestrian bike safety committee when I first joined that committee. And we talked about it at length over a couple of meetings and and looked up some studies and did a little bit of of research. And the the main thing that we came up with at the end and the main thing that kind of came out of our research with that is that these, this type of program, this little pedestrian flag program generally only works if it's a community effort, I'll say. So like, if it's the kids at the school are designing and creating the flags and maintaining them on an ongoing basis or something like that, or if it's outside of a business, if that business is actively maintaining it, then these, that type of program tends to to stay up to date. But otherwise, you know, when a city just does it, or municipality just does it and plunks it out there and the community is not involved, people don't really use them. The kids just take them as they run along through the neighborhood waving the flags around. And eventually you run out of the flags and eventually, you know, relatively quickly, the program falls into, you know, out of out of any sort of use. So that type of program, I would rather see that come up from, say, the school or something like that. If we want something like that, it it really, somebody needs to have ownership of it on an individual level and 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 a community level. Otherwise, they just tend not to work. You know, with with regards to some of the other things, I mean, I think the painting that is marked here that we can do without WISDOT, I mean, I'm generally in favor of those items, especially if we can use ARPA funds for those things. With regards to the flashing beacons, you know, we got that paid for by that grant. And that was just to kind of put something out there originally, and and that was originally recommended at that time. I'd I'd be okay with, you know, doing what we need to do to to make that up to proper regulation going forward. Otherwise, a couple of these things are a little bit more complicated than they than they kind of seem on the surface. I'm very hesitant about the idea of removal of crosswalks. I'm just cautious as to where that would go and what that would look like. But the other things, you know, the the flashing beacon, I definitely, you know, I'm in favor of of trying to make that up to code or what whatnot. And the painting of the pedestrian signs and the the signage on the pavement, I definitely agree with that as well. But overall, I mean, this is just a lot of really good items to to look into, and I just really appreciate all of the work, you know, that was done looking at these things.
Thank you, trustee Lynn. Appreciate your thoughts and I agree with a lot of what you've said. Trustee Baldoff, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thanks. One other thing I had meant to mention earlier is Leanne has said a couple of times in other meetings since I've, I thought I raised, or lowered my hand, that we can't engineer our way out of every problem. And I like that expression, and I think it is one that is true. And I think there is a lot of truth in that here. And I agree with, you know, a number of these changes, like the, you know, additional markings and signs and the beacons. I also agree with trustee Lynn, like, we would love to see the school district be a part of the, like, a flag program if we do it. But the thing that I haven't really heard us talk a whole lot about is collaboration with the police department, because I think that if we really want to change some of the driving behavior, you know, we could look at some, like, targeted enforcement here, you know, to really help reduce the people who are driving recklessly through here. I was on a ride along on Friday and, you know, obviously, school's not in session yet. I'm definitely looking forward to doing doing that again and would love to do that when school is in session and see what our officers are seeing. And, you know, I think having Chief Worth be a part of this conversation is really important to know what she and the officers are seeing and how we could perhaps have some targeted enforcement on this corridor. And, you know, the other thing, and I know we've talked about this, we're incredibly fortunate to have a great, you know, pedestrian and bike safety committee and like have folks that are really committed. And I would just love to see more of a, you know, kind of like approach that is including the school here because, you know, like, the pedestrians are part of the problem too. And I say that as a parent of a kid who just graduated high school and one who is going into high school this year. And, you know, the, I see, you know, some of the kids who are just stepping out into traffic and not paying attention and kids who are old enough to know better. It's a really, it's a big road. And I think sometimes people aren't paying attention or they think they've got more time to cross. And I would just love to see us, in addition to making some of these safety improvements, really double down on our efforts to communicate the role that pedestrians have to play in safety because, like, something I've always talked about with my kids is like, it doesn't matter if you have the right of way, a car is going to beat you, you know, like, we need to make sure that the kids who are crossing the street at all of those different points, because it's a lot. And I I know it would be safer if they all crossed at the controlled intersections. Like, I get that. And I get that's why there was the request to remove some of those crosswalks, right? Because it would just be safer if we had them at the controlled intersections at Oakland and then down at Morris and not crossing at this at this other location. But they're going to cross, like, and I want to make sure that they are as safe as possible when they do that. And so I think we need to be looking at all these things that we can do to, you know, make people safer when they cross and educate them too. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, trustee Baldoff. Trustee Lynn, and then we will take some questions from the public or or some responses from the public.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to to piggyback because I was on a ride along a couple of weeks ago as well and and we did some targeted enforcement on Capitol and the officer I was with indicated that he is, you know, trying to do more targeted enforcement there when he came and things like that. So I appreciate that that's part of this whole dialogue. But he made a similar comment, you know, he said they come out, they flood the street, they run across to the gas station to buy their chips and whatever else, and then they run, they run back. And, you know, it's hard, hard to stop that. But one thing that was not on here that he did mention that he sees often is when you're traveling east on Capitol and you get to Capitol and Morris, if you go to turn right southbound on Morris, that's actually a no turn on red. And the sign is not easy to see there. So people generally just don't follow that sign. Most people don't even know that it's there. And he said he's seen people there, you know, pulled over people a couple of times for that. They had no idea the sign was there. That if there's a way to make that sign a little more visible or to add a second version of that on the inside of Morris, that was something that the that the police officer brought up that specifically he has seen and and had to deal with. And that wasn't on this list, and I just, I wanted to bring that up on and add that to the list. So, thank you.
Trustee Lynn, I think people see it and I think they they just say, I didn't, I never saw it. Because I I take that, I take that, and because there's also another one at the end of Morris turning on to to Oakland and I see both of them. They're both very apparent. But if I were to get pulled over, the first thing I would say is, I didn't see that, you know, so I I kind of question, I question that a little bit. I do think that it's pretty, it's it's pretty obvious and but, you know, you may be right, maybe extra signage would would be great. I think people are going to. I think what, I think it's all about education at those points because people have no idea why that is not, why you can't turn right there because they're so used to turning right on red. So I think it's it's just, it's so abnormal for people that they just don't think it it applies to them and they just turn. So but, you know, I think a lot of things we talk about here, the more education, the better for for residents, for for drivers, for everybody. Leanne, I'm sorry, you were going to say something.
I I'm sorry. I was just going to say that we, those signs have been up for a couple of years. And we have tried multiple configurations and locations on that sign, particularly at Morris and Capitol. But we can, we can continue to experiment or or maybe try again in different locations and see if we get any improved adherence.
Yeah, I mean, I live, I live a block away and I and I feel like nine out of 10 times people are turning right on that. So so, you know, but but I think once they get they get stopped by the police, that they stop doing that. So
That's one less person.
Yeah, exactly. What? That's eight out of 10 then. Okay, so we have quite a few people here from the public. Would love to hear some comments. I see Vashti's hand raised. Vashti, would you like to, would you like to join and please kind of state your name and your address?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Vashti Lozier, 2535 East Lake Bluff Boulevard. I'm also the facilitator for the Shorewood Connects intergenerational community building project. And I was one of the submitters of this list of suggestions in conjunction with Katie Now, who is on Elder Services Advisory Board, and Gary Brunk on Parks and Public Services. So I just wanted to thank Leanne. Thank you so much for taking the time to go through these and to vet these over the summer, which I know is a busy time. Part of the timing of putting this out was concern for students going back to school. There was a student hit on Morris and Capitol, as many of you know, and I think that's an area that's been a concern for many years for parents and for others. I know a lot of times changes come to pass when someone's hurt fatally in these kinds of incidents. So I would love to address this before that happens. And that's why we brought this forth at the timing that we did. And 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 again, thanks, thank you, Leanne, for taking it seriously during a time when I know a lot of people are on vacation and stuff. So we tried to address things So we tried to address things that we thought could be handled quickly, like the tree trimming, thank you for doing that. That was something we noticed right away, is that some of those signs that are existing aren't, weren't visible at all, so that's just huge to make what's there visible. The, I'm just kind of going through the list of things that we talked about, the CME, so the flag program, that's, there are kits for like $200 an intersection where those could be purchased. I feel like it's just such a low-cost item to try, and if it doesn't work, and if I feel like the village can support poop bags, and you can get people to, you know, refill poop bags. I can't imagine that we can't manage these flags in some way, whether it's the Shorewood Foundation or through the school district. I have had preliminary conversations with the new superintendent, and she's very much on board on improving the situation on Capitol Drive, so I'm sure that we could figure that out if that's something the village wants to move forward on. I'm glad to hear the paint, the painting of the school crossing signs on the lanes actually is a possibility. I think that would be huge. The flashing beacons on the curbs as well as the median, I'm glad to hear that actually is what's you know, the regulation, because I think that would make a huge difference. The removal of crosswalks, my understanding is that was recommended in a previous engineering study or some other village study, I guess I don't know which one, but my understanding is that one was already suggested. There's just so many through there that it's hard as a driver to attend to what's going on and where people are crossing. And creating those barriers for people and students crossing at places they shouldn't, like a fencing or planters in the median, that was, that's why we suggested that, so that we could get, and then little signs that said, please cross only at designated spots to try to encourage people to do that. I want to thank the police department for the targeted enforcement they've done this summer. It's been awesome. I have driven through there when that was happening and really watched what I was doing, even though I feel like I'm careful all the time, it really makes a huge difference, and I am even more careful myself going through Capitol Drive now. And then the engineering study, I am in favor of that happening, if that is something the village can support now and afford and find, you know, find the funding for, and particularly maybe to consider both these items, which we considered short-term solutions, as well as, you know, if we're spending 50, if we're spending as much as 50,000, if we could look at long-term solutions, because I believe that Capitol Drive will be updated at some point in the future, so like the Bollards bump outs were really what we were hoping for long-term, so I don't know if it makes sense to include looking at that, and then maybe a road diet, like, going from four lanes to two, because I do think that opens up there, and people kind of like, oh, it's an expressway, we can just race through here, and that's just a place where a lot of people are crossing. So those are, those are my comments. And again, thank you, trustees, and thank you, Leanne, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vashti, and thank you, you know, thank you for all the work that you've also put into this, that, you know, you know, we love the saying around here, it takes the village, and we really appreciate that kind of the energy that you've you've put into this. As trustees, we have like our, we're everywhere, right? We're thinking about all these different projects going all at once, so for residents and volunteer, community volunteers, it's really, really important, the work that you're doing. So thank you so much. The next hand I see was Sandy Pendleton. Sandy, if you could just state your name and your address.
Hi, good evening. This is Sandy Pendleton. I reside at 3529 North Frederick Avenue in Shorewood. Thank you, Chair Ersink, and thanks to the other trustees for your service. This is not my initiative. This is not something I've really been involved in in coming up with this list, but I want to take this opportunity to really applaud the DPW's response here, that it's so thorough and so prompt here. I'm impressed. I really appreciate that, that we've had this response here to, you know, I think a list of suggestions that are all put forward in good faith. Resources are limited, so I think the village should focus on the two most important priorities here, and I see the two most important priorities here as the RRFB signs and the issue of speed, and we reduce the posted speed limit on Capitol Drive from 30 miles to 25 miles. We all know if a speed limit is posted on a street, a busy street at 30 miles an hour, a lot of the drivers are gonna travel at 35 miles per hour. The difference between a pedestrian getting hit at those two different, those two speeds, 25 miles versus 35 miles is substantial. It doubles the pedestrians mortality rate. It's probably even higher if we're dealing with a child or an elderly person. It goes from like less than 5% to over 10% there. So that's a really important issue. I only think we should do the engineering study, though, if we're reasonably confident we're going to get a positive result on that, and I just don't have enough experience in that area to know. Let's not spend $7,000, $10,000, or $15,000 on the engineering speed study unless we go into it fairly confident that we're going to have something that we can take back to the state and get a, get the result we want here. On the RRFB signs, a lot of studies show those are really effective. I think those are very popular amongst residents. Certainly, when we were talking about putting those in on Lake Drive, overwhelming public support for doing that, overwhelming public support for those on Lake Drive in Whitefish Bay. So I think that should be the second priority here as we look at using limited resources. Ultimately, though, long-term, this has to be a design solution. We really don't have problems with speeding on Capitol near Atwater, because at Capitol, at Atwater there, it's a village street, we have two travel lanes rather than four, and it's designed with pinch points. Long-term, ultimately, we cannot dramatically improve safety on Capitol Drive with incremental small changes, as we're discussing here tonight, even even if these are all very good ideas. We can only get dramatic improvement on safety on Capitol Drive when we redesign and reconstruct Capitol Drive, and we make it again a village street rather than something more akin to North Port Washington Road or West Blue Mountain Road. Thank you very much for my consider, for your consideration of my suggestions and comments here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that, guys. I got stuck in, in the, in one of these little tabs down here, and I couldn't unmute myself fast enough. Okay, is there any other, so we have Katie Now. Katie, I just want to just give you a heads up that it is 7:23, and this is scheduled to go to 7:30, so. Please, please go ahead and just be mindful that we, we're gonna try to wrap this up in the next five to 10 minutes.
I'm not gonna talk that long, I promise. Hi, this is Katie Now. I live at 1020 East Glendale Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Elder Services Advisory Board and one of the citizens who submitted this original list. I do want to just echo again the thanks for taking it seriously and looking closely at it. And I also want to echo Sandy's commentary that this is not the be-all, end-all list, or intended to be the only or a long-term solution, any of these items. It was really a group of citizens who, here, both in our committee work and just in our day-to-day, how important it is that we keep everybody safe in that area, and that that's an area that particularly doesn't feel very safe. I recently attended the sixth grade, we don't call it graduation, whatever ceremony at Lake Bluff, and happened to sit in front of a group of parents who were talking about their anxiety about their kids crossing Capitol going to school. Just a few hours later, I was at a Elder Services Advisory Board meeting, and I heard a group of older adults talking about how it was a dangerous area for them, and it just felt like there has got to be a better way to begin to approach this, keeping in mind the long term. So I really just want to say thank you for looking at these things. I don't think our expectation is that every one of them is viable or possible, you know, given the reality of budgets and whatnot, and we recognize that, but I do appreciate the board and the village taking all of them seriously, and I hope that we can make some changes, and I think that whatever changes we make will also just show the community that this is something we're taking seriously, that the safety of pedestrians and walking to school is really important. I did want to just mention one small, like, logistical question. In regards to number eight, the reducing the number of crosswalks, that was actually somewhat inspired by the safety study from, I believe it's 2017. So part of the process for preparing this list, we walked the area slowly, taking notes, taking photos, observing car behavior, pedestrian behavior, bike behavior, et cetera, and we also reviewed past documents within the village. I think it was also mentioned in the 2020 Parking and Transportation Study. I was, like, trying to go back through these past reports.
My apologies, Katie. Is there, can someone please mute themselves?
Sorry, it's because I'm not muted, and
Oh, okay.
This is my real case. I will share with you. This is what it looks like all day long for me, so.
That, that sound just goes right into my ear, and it's very piercing, so it's very hard to, like, actually listen to you.
Apology.
If there's a way to turn that off just momentarily, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I don't know that there is when I don't have my computer muted. I haven't found one. I get about 100 to 150 texts a day. Anyway, um, so just thank you, everyone, for taking a look at that. I appreciate some serious consideration for all of these, so, thanks.
Okay, fantastic, Katie. Thank you for taking the walk slowly through the neighborhood and doing all that work. It's really, again, I said it earlier, but it's fantastic that we have residents willing to do that, to put in the time and energy for public, for public safety, so that is very much appreciated. Okay, board, we have three minutes, and we kind of have a fairly complicated, you know, we have some, some items review to recommend. You know, I've heard that it sounds like we're pretty open to the majority of the items that are possible without WISDOT. I am kind of in agreement with trustee Lynn, though, on item three. I mean, I've seen these flag programs just kind of, you know, just, just be, you know, failures, you know, the flags go missing, like, within the second day, and then it's, there's just empty buckets, and so I, I would be open to a more creative approach than what's laid out here. I'd love to talk to the schools about that, to see if there could be a program where for children to help make, you know, flags, whatever the case is, I'd love to kind of explore that a little bit more, and I'd rather not vote on that this evening. But, but I think looking at, you know, you know, items four, five, 10, 11 look pretty doable without, you know, without, you know, going too, too deep into it. Are there any suggestions, trustee Lynn, trustee, trustee Baldoff? This is ARPA funds, and I guess I'd love to know kind of where we're at with the, with the ARPA funds. Do we have a current sort of balance for that, and how much would these items kind of dig into that?
I think Leanne included that, right?
Okay.
I think that's in the, in the notes.
Oh, we've got $210, and we're looking at, yeah, it's 210. So if we look at three, five, 10, 11, that's an estimated cost of $20,000 to $30,000, which I think is, is, is very doable. Outside of those, without, you know, like I said, I'd probably be more in, in, I'd be more in favor of the four, five, 10, 11. Is there any case to be made for three or any other items that are, that are there on this list?
So I have, I have some quick notes. So I would push three, that we look for some other sources on that. Not because of a cost thing or anything like that, but just because we need somebody who is gonna do it and maintain it, and that
Yeah, we want to see it work. I agree.
Yeah. And then I'm also in favor of using ARPA funds for four, five, 10, and 11. And then with regards to the engineering study, I'd like to kind of piggyback on what Sandy Pendleton had said earlier. I think the, the two things I would, I would focus on is if we, if we need the state to look at, and, you know, another rapid flashing beacon or something like that, I would like to look at that. I absolutely want to look at reducing speed. That's the, the number one thing for me. If we can ask the state for anything, I'd like to ask them for that. And then if we can fit it in there, I think the median kind of blocking, maybe the small fencing or something like that, I would like to ask them about that, and I think that wouldn't be too big of an ask, just because they have that exact same thing on Capitol already outside of the Walmart and in that area. And so I, from a engineering study standpoint, it doesn't seem too difficult to look at that. And then if we're, if we do go down the path of looking for more long-term things, I would like to look at the bump outs as well, but again, that might be a bigger, bigger ask than we're capable of. And then with regards to reducing the number of crosswalks, you know, I was there when that text was originally written. It's certainly not an infallible document. I think we all had the same thought at the time on the Pedestrian Bike Safety Committee that was just like, there's a lot of crosswalks, it'd be great if there were less. I think if, given what the state has, has told us already about removing those, that it would need, we would need to, you know, basically re-engineer the street, I think that's something that we just need to keep on that list for when the repavement does come along, and then we can examine it at that time when we're already doing that. I'm okay with that. So that's my last two cents. Thank you.
Vashti, I apologize, but we are out of time here, and I do want to hear from Leanne real quick before, before going. Do you have, is your comment quick?
Yes, it's really quick. I just wanted to point out that number 10, the pedestrians must use marked crossings, was a suggestion if we were eliminating crossings, so that's not something I would necessarily consider unless we were eliminating crossings.
Thank you for that note. Thank you.
Okay, Leanne.
Thank you. I've heard it a couple of times tonight, so I just want to be clear. There is no redo, so to speak, of Capitol Drive on the horizon. That roadway was just redesigned and reconstructed in 2010. So I would expect we are probably looking at multiple decades, perhaps as many as 30 to 40, before WISDOT revisits this corridor. So just, just so everybody has, you know, has that context.
Thank you.
Yep, and I find it hard to believe that we could take that road down to two lanes without, you know, without causing just nightmare traffic scenario within on Capitol and then shooting off into other neighborhoods around Capitol. Living off Morris, I can only imagine what that would be like. Sometimes when we're blocking one lane right now in that area for DPW work, it is a nightmare, you know, so I could only imagine by making that two lanes would be an absolute nightmare, so. Just a thought on that, I don't know if that's a realistic option or something that, that, you know, like I said, to, like, we had 2024, or 2000, you know, 40 or 50 when we look at this, maybe future boards will want to do that, but I cannot see that being something that I would vote for right now.
Trustee Ersink, just a friendly reminder, it's 7:34.
Yep, yep, I was just gonna say that. So it is 7:34, and we do need to make a suggested motion here to the full board. Trustee Baldoff.
A quick question with that. Can we, given that we had a thorough discussion, do we need to make a suggested motion that's extremely detailed to the village board? Or can we just move this discussion to the board and then recap the full board with our, you know, agreed-upon top few things?
Rebecca?
The decision's really up to the committee.
Well, seeing the, for the, you know, the sake of time, we're at 7:35 right now, and I think it would probably take us another 10 minutes to create something here, a recommended motion that, that we could bring to the board, so I think, why don't we just leave it here? And we will recap our conversation at the full board, if that's all right with the, my other committee members.
I'm okay with that.
Trustee Baldoff?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Sounds like a plan, then, guys. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the public for jumping on here and for all your hard work in the community. Thank you for the trustees. This is, you know, Uh, thank you for the trustees. Uh, this is uh, you know, I, I think we're always focused on these types of issues here in Shorewood and it's, it's great to kind of move forward to a closer, um, you know, a safer community for pedestrians, uh bikes, bicyclists and, and also drivers. So thank you so much, everybody. Uh, can I? Yep, uh, so moved. Can I get a second? There you go. What, you motioned, so uh.
Oh.
Second.
There you go. All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor? Everybody?
Aye.
Yes? Okay, great. Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:36 and we are staying here for the next meeting.
Hi, everyone. Um, do the Public Works uh committee members need a bio break? No?
Nope.
All right. Then we will go ahead and uh convene. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board at 7:37. Um, all trustees are present and accounted for. And I'm split screen here, so if there's anybody I'm missing, let me know. Um, has this meeting been properly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, welcome, everyone. We'll get going here. Um, item four, special of order of business, we have none this evening. That takes us to item five, consent agendas, items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tomok.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, was that uh trustee Kudo?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Um, motion by trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item um B as in Betty and um H as in Harriet and as in Nancy.
Okay. I'd like to pull item L. Any other items? All right. Um, motion to approve the consent. Trustee. I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll second. I'll join Kathy in uh pulling uh item H.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the consent uh agenda with the exception of these items, um, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, um, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item six, items removed to the cons- from the consent agenda, uh, we'll take item five B first. Trustee Stokbrand.
Thank you.
Village Board meeting minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct on the committee of the whole meeting, the long-range financial plan. Instead of 2023 to 2024, it should be 2024 to 2033. And then um I did have um another item, um, a number six in the regular board meeting minutes. Um, at the top of the next second page there of those, talks about a, a gentleman, um, Jeff Morris stated the, something, a cyclist that could be attracted to the new bike lanes and felt the report misrepresented data and requested, and it drops off. So um if staff could please just, if Clerk Carroll could please review that and either put what he asked or somehow edit it so that it doesn't dangle. And then finally, under Village Trustees, um, I did send content to Clerk Carroll today. Um, mine should be trustee Stokbrand stated Vasti Lozier of the Senior Resource Center. Katie Now of the Elder Services Advisory Board and Gary Brunk um applied for a, well, I sent her the text, um, submitted application for peda- possible pedestrian safety improvements on Capitol Drive. And that's all I had.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes uh with those corrections?
I think Jim had something, didn't he?
Um, I just need to mute myself from H.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what Jim said.
So I, I had a concern about a later item, Kathy.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I, I'll, I'll move to approve the item B as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved with, as corrected, um, seven zero. Moving on to item H. Trustee Stokbrand? Oh, and I believe trustee Arndorfer is going to recuse himself from this item. He's nodding. Okay, trustee Stokbrand?
My concern here is about the, the three to five-year window on this because we have, um, we're, we're spending money on university to come up with a communication plan, excuse me. I am hesitant to get into a three to five-year contract here when uh it seems to me that it'd be better to come up with a relook at our communication strategy instead of continuing with this under this, the current model. Um, we've been doing this now for over 10 years and seemed like it would be good to relook at Shorewood today in light of communication goals and let's, let's find out what we're going to hear from the university recommendation. I'd rather see this as, I'd like to, I'll move to make it a one-year. And I'd honestly like to see our website redone. Um, I think that would be meaningful for our communications. And I, we, I think we need to touch base with everybody involved in this and say, are we getting what we need from this? We talked before about making possibly um a, a quick, a faster, simpler publication that would go in between every Shorewood Today to try to update residents more comprehensively and nothing happened. I don't know if that was during, I can't remember in COVID where it was. We talked about message boards. Um, I just, for those reasons, I hesitate to, I question going into a three to five-year contract.
Uh, is there something you'd like to propose? So basically.
Those are one year. Because we should ever, if, if staff could please advise, will we have our university recommendation a year from now?
Perhaps. It's very likely that we will, trustee Stokbrand. Um, starting up this fall, we will be, uh, you know, of course, starting with being matched with a student group. In fact, I communicated last week with the professor that is doing our creative uh campaign messaging class that we've been matched to. And um I anticipate we'll have some recommendations from the class by December before they get out for semester. Um, the way that the university year's program is structured though, is implementation happens in year three. Um, so maybe we can expedite that. Um, I think you started mentioning something about uh the interest of our other stakeholders. Um, the week before last, when we were uh getting an RFP, getting the review of the RFP done, our stakeholders on the Marketing Leadership Committee um all expressed interest in continuing with this, with the magazine. Um, and I believe that the three-year, of course, is just uh part of our procurement policy, but.
I guess my biggest concern is that, you know, it'd be great if this was self-sustaining and didn't require taxpayer money. That would be the goal.
I understand. I think at this time, I think given the nature of how this um is agendacized, uh, what I would take is a motion to defer the item. If there's a sec, you know, if trustee Stokbrand, if you'd like to defer the item, that would be an option. Otherwise, I'm not prepared to, I don't think we have the information in front of us to um make any changes to the RFP. So if there is a motion and a second, then we will consider it. If not, then we'll move on.
So you, you wouldn't entertain a motion to make it a one-year contract?
I mean, you can certainly make that motion if you're not, but you hadn't made a motion. So you, I would invite you either to make a motion at this time or um we will take it as presented.
Okay, then I'll move to, let me just get the exact wording here. Um, I would move to approve the um RFP as presented, changing the time period instead of three to five years to one year.
Is there a second?
Can I, can I just speak? I've got my hand raised. Is there, is there no?
Hold on, I know that.
Speak on this? Okay.
No, let's see if there's a motion. Okay, motion fails for lack of second. Um, I said uh Village Manager Ewald and trustee Ursink. My reason for not calling on you sooner, trustee Ursink, is that if there's no, if, if there's no will of the board to um to move in any different direction, then I don't think it's necessary to discuss it. So is there a motion to approve the RFP as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Um, further discussion? All of those in favor, say aye. Oh, trustee Ursink? I'm sorry, I missed your hand.
I just, yep, no, I just, I just want to, I just want to uh, to run the voices of support for Shorewood Today. You know, it, I, I couldn't have a more opposing viewpoint of this magazine. It has been, if you look at any other magazine, which are all for-profit in any other community in the North Shore, those magazines are terrible. They, they do not, they do not, um, they do not have the community support and buy-in that we do here with our stakeholders and our community with Shorewood Today. Is a fantastic, fantastic um uh publication that, that everybody here in the community buys into. And I couldn't, I couldn't uh preach more uh to the qualities of this magazine. And to have a one-year contract really puts them in a very, very difficult situation, trying to raise uh money through advertising, which they do do right now. So I think the buy-in between the community, the stakeholders, as well as the commu- business community is, is a fantastic model and, and it's been very successful. So I, I don't see any need to change this and I only look to, forward to supporting more than I can.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the RFP um as presented, say aye or show of hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? And um we have one recusal. Okay, so that was uh one person refused, one opposed and five in support or two.
I opposed. Sorry. Yep, that was me. I, I just raised my hand.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. I'm going through.
Should I be raising my hand or saying it out loud or both or, or neither?
Let's do both or we'll do roll call votes. I have three screens of faces, so I'm going as fast as I can, but I'm missing him.
That's fine.
Okay, so two oppose, two nay, four yay and one recuse, recusing. All right, so motion carries. Item L, uh trick or treat. I was reading the memo and it looked like there was no, um, we needed to make a motion. And so I would make a motion to um continue the trick or treat on the date of the Sunday before. Or however it's worded.
On the 29th?
Yeah, the 29th. Yes, thank you. Whatever's in the memo that is uh keeps with the ICC.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can some, I mean, I was not on the board. Maybe I was on, well, whatever. Uh, the year that we had it at night, people seemed to really enjoy having trick or treat at night. Uh, I know my kids loved it. Was there any, what was the logic behind not doing, not continuing that and going back to the daytime?
Uh, I don't have the answer to that. Does anyone else?
I, I.
It's like Arthur's got to stand up.
Yep, so it's something that I've, I've kind of talked about as well, Eric or trustee Kudo. And, you know, I think what it comes down to is, is a um, you know, is a safety perspective. Uh, I know for one, my street is an absolute, you know, I, my street is, is chaos. Uh, and it's actually really pretty dangerous uh during the day. Like, I'm surprised more people don't get hit. People get parked in. It's, it's, it's chaos. And I think that uh having it nighttime could lead to, to, you know, I, I think could be a little bit more dangerous. But um, you know, I would be, I would be for it. And, and I think that it was like, there was something that, you know, we wanted to connect our hours with like Whitefish Bay or have similar hours to Whitefish Bay um to a certain degree. But um, but I, I think for me speaking, if, if it was dark and uh there was trick or treating, it'd be a really sort of dangerous scenario on Shore, uh, on, on Morris Boulevard.
Uh, if I may, my recollection of the discussion last year was that it was a safety concern and that it was kind of around the time that we had been starting to talk more about the streetlight issues. And that, again, I'd have to go back and like look at minutes, but that is my recollection of how it came to be that we chose the earlier hours, like. That said, like, I am not opposed to the later hours. Um, I definitely noticed that I did not have as many trick or treaters at my house last year. Um, but, you know, I, I'm not opposed to the later hours. But if I, like I said, if I remember correctly, it was a safety issue.
Trustee Lynn?
Yes, thank you. Um, so yeah, a couple of things I think, you know, um, I, I'm okay with the daytime hours given the age of.
The age of.
You know, maybe selfishly, but um I, I, I like going around with them during the day. Um, I do love nighttime trick or treating. And when I was, you know, a kid, we did have that where I grew up in Moatosa and my parents have that in their neighborhood in Moatosa. Uh, but that was never the official municipal trick or treat time. So basically what neighborhoods would do is like, you know, a couple block radius, parents would go around, have other parents agree to participate. You, you know, the parents who were participating in it would put a little something on their door, whatever it was. And on the evening, usually like the evening before the municipal trick or treating or something like that, um, kids would go out in that, within that neighborhood and it was all neighborhood operated by the parents and families there. You know, that's a great thing um that I remember growing up and that it still happens in my parents' neighborhood. Um, you know, I'm not sure how we could do, you know, how we would do that here, but I'd be happy to, to look into that. But otherwise, as, as much as it pains me, you know, um, to go with the less cool option, I, I am still in favor at this point of the daytime uh trick or treating.
Trustee Arndorfer?
I'm fine with daytime. I did just want to make the all-important point though, that this time does conflict with the uh Packer biking game, so just uh, you know, plan according.
Well, everybody will be home. Uh, trustee.
I think. A couple of different things. Uh, one, I, having grown up on Morris, uh, where trustee Arndorfer lives, I recognize, and my parents still live there, I fully recognize um kind of one of a, a mess it becomes. Um, I, you know. I, you know, I think that there, I think there's an opportunity to perhaps close that street during trick-or-treating and make it a lot safer, whether we continue with the daytime or do it at night. I mean, the, the real problem there is our cars. And if we remove the cars from the situation, it, it becomes quite a bit safer. Two, you know, this, I would love to do it at night. My kids are a little bit older. You know, I, I have my bias, just like trustee Lynn has his for his younger kids. You know, if, I, I would like to have a little bit, maybe a little bit larger conversation about this. I'm really glad you pulled it, President Mckay. You know, is this something we have to decide today? Is this something that we could, you know, community and business relations could tackle in our next meeting? What's the?
I believe in the.
What's the story?
Yeah, in the materials, it says that the recreation department needs to know, because they're setting up their fall programming.
We also have it noted within the, the addition of Shorewood Today, which is ready to go to print. So if it's going to be modified, we need to be able to change it. If you as trustees want to put this on as a future agenda item, as we, you know, move into quarter one for next year, to have another conversation of it in advance, you're welcome to do so. But I, for purposes of just clear communication with the community, I think it'd be helpful if we did come to a consensus tonight.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion.
We don't have a second.
Correct.
Oh, but I'll second President Mckay. You had the, the original motion?
I did. I made a motion to support the afternoon hours.
Then I'll, I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion with the hope that we can chat about this again early in '24.
That'd be great. And that we have a lot of previous minutes and videos of meetings, because it was definitely discussed at length over the past 10 years, different, different times. There may even be survey results someplace. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Ursink, let me check trustee Ursink. Are you there? Keeps skipping you. All right, all those in favor, why don't we do a roll call vote, just because of the virtual nature of this?
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer? Aye?
Sorry, yes, aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
President Mckay?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item five N, as in Nancy, Kathy Stokbrand. Consider RFP for municipal GIS services.
I'm in favor of this. I just would like to communicate it again to the organization that they should be, respect our village ordinance, that if you're over the age of 12, you should be riding in the street and not on the sidewalk. Because is there a way to, someone from staff to communicate that to them with the? There've been problems with a lot of the people ride on the sidewalk. I think it was better last year when this was brought to their attention.
Oh, are you referring to the, the Chris Keagle slow roll?
Yeah, I'm sorry, am I in the wrong one?
Yep, it's okay. No, I thought, I thought it was on that you were going to talk about the GIS services, but we'll be happy to relate to them, that same, that same item. And it did come up during the course of the permit review.
Okay, then I move to approve the special event permit for the Chris Slow Roll on August 27, 2023.
Second. Second, oh.
I'm fine with that. The, didn't, but did we not already, like, pass that?
We did. Right, so trustee Stokbrand, I might have misunderstood, but I heard you pull five N, as in Nancy, which is the GIS services RFP. So the item P, as in Polly, has already been passed as part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I must have an old agenda.
If we could just have a motion to approve or consider the municipal GIS services RFP, that would be appreciated.
So moved.
So I move to approve the RFP for municipal GIS services.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Sorry about that. Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
President Mckay?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. That concludes our consent agenda business. Moving on to public hearings, we have none this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Discussion may follow. Comment on non-agenda items or discussion and action may come at future meetings. It's more accurate that this is a time for citizens to be heard and action or discussion will occur at future meetings under a future item of consideration. Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening? All right, I see 13 attendees and I don't see any hands.
Correct. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. All right, moving on then, we are at new business. Nine A, consider award of contract for Shorewood Sewer Outfall Slope Stabilization Project, 4480 Lake Drive. I believe this item has been requested to be deferred. Manager Ewald?
I was just going to make the deferral request.
Okay. We've been requested to defer this item. Is there a motion to defer? Trustee Stokbrand?
I'll move.
I move to defer this item to allow staff time to consult with financial guidance, to get financial guidance.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries seven zero. Nine B, consider inclusion of goals and business district light fixtures within the streetlight replacement plan. And this item comes to us as a follow-up discussion on dark, dark, I want to keep saying dark store compliance, but it's dark sky compliance. And so there is a memo that outlines some options. This comes as a follow-up to ARPA funding that we were requested to allocate for replacing the light fixtures lamps with LEDs on the remaining fixtures on Capitol and Oakland. Upon further investigation, it seems that that option is not available, but only light full fixture replacement at a cost of close to $800,000. Director Bruce Lick, do I have that summary correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at this time, I think my understanding is that we need to do nothing. If we, unless we want to make a motion to approve the cost of full lamp, I mean, light fixture replacement. Is that, is that accurate? Okay, thank you very much. I should also say, doing this thorough review, and thank you for, I believe it's trustee Stark, Stokbrand and trustee Ursink, who requested this information to be start dark sky compliant. Is there a motion at this time to authorize a full light fixture replacement? Trustee Stokbrand?
I was just looking for some clarification. I've been in contact with Leanne today, trying to understand the light fixtures presented in the, at the July meeting. So I guess I'm confused when the thing, the image that was presented as the current light, there actually are only four of those in the village?
So my apologies that that illustration was. My, my apologies that that illustration was not clearly notated. That was a, an illustration pulled from a cut sheet from our most current replacement. So it did not show the, the, the majority of the fixtures, which, as you know, have some decorative cutouts at the top of the bulb, at the top of the fixture that allow the light to shine upward. So in fact, that picture was not an accurate representation of exactly the style of the fixture. The, the fix, the current lake, excuse me, the current Oakland Avenue and Capitol Drive Commercial District fixtures were installed in 20, in 2010 on Capitol Drive and in 2007 and 2008 on North and South Oakland Avenue. Those fixtures, as, as noted, originally had a light assembly where there were some decorative cutouts at the very top of it. We have replaced approximately a half dozen of those fixtures due to conflicts with automobiles and, and those poles where, where the pole lost, we'll say. And the, the fixture type from 2007, eight and 10 is no longer manufactured. So those items, in those locations, they were replaced with a similar fixture. In fact, it, it's nearly identical with the exception of the elimination of those, those cutout, those decorative light cutouts on the top. So we have the original fixtures. We have, I said, approximately a half dozen, we'll call them replacement fixtures. And so that would be the differentiation. And again, I apologize. We, we used an illustration off a cut sheet from the most current fixture, which would be, you know, those half dozen replacements.
So we have probably hundreds of lights that are open on the top?
We have 100 and, say about 160 or so?
160, 160.
Dan knows exactly. And I know he's listening.
We have 320, 320 lights.
Okay, good thing I said, yeah, 320.
With the open tops? And with, the motion that's already been approved is to put an LED lighting element inside all of them. The six, the six new ones and the 320 old ones.
The six new ones are, are currently LED.
Oh. Okay. And we can get LED for the old, original, all-glass ones also?
Yes.
And the, what was confusing to me, besides the fact that we have so few of the closed-top ones, was that the dark sky compliance was the same for both fixtures?
No, it is different. The 78.8% is for the open topped ones. So the original ones that were installed 10-ish years ago.
Okay, and for the six that have the closed top, what's their compliance?
98-point-something percent, I believe.
Oh, okay. All right, that makes sense. All right, but if we wanted to get all of them to match the six that have 98 compliance, it would be $768,000?
Yes, but that would only take you to 98%. Not 100.
Right, okay. Well, that's, that's too much money for me. But as, as they age, I guess we don't, I mean, the model is you can't get the all-open ones anymore anyway. So one would think over time, if they start to fail or something, we would be getting the ones with the 98.8% rating anyway.
Correct.
But they apparently are very expensive one at a time.
Very much so.
Okay, thank you for all your help.
You're welcome.
All right, so we only need a motion if the board wishes to pursue total replacement, correct? Otherwise, we don't need a motion on this item?
Correct.
Okay. I am not hearing any motions, so we can move on. Thank you very much. I was, we learned a lot.
Can I ask, I, I know we're moving on, but I, I am remiss to ask the, if the Conservation Committee, I know that they had recently met a couple of days ago, if they had any opinion on this particular item?
I believe it was referenced in the memo.
So the Conservation Committee did provide a memo to the board that I believe was distributed earlier this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, so it could have gotten just caught up in email.
Yeah, okay, definitely. Would that have come from Toya?
It came from Assistant Village Manager. Yeah, Chrissy Anderson. And while trustee Ursink is looking at that, I did want to clarify. So no motion is clear on the business district lighting. There are two other items that I'd like to get some direction from the board on with regards to our residential lighting system. So if you, if you look under the memo, the actions required, did want to get some direction on dark sky designation, as well as the residential lighting, including Lake Drive. We're at a point, I'm going to start with potentially Lake Drive, unless Leanne, do you want me, do you want to continue? Or I apologize for jumping in. I just want to make sure we get what we need for this, so.
I appreciate it. I.
Okay.
I will first, that's my.
That's okay. This, this was a pretty lengthy item to put together with a lot of information. So one of the things that we want the board's direction on is that WISSTAT has already designed the layouts for lighting on Lake Drive. We have an opportunity, so directed by the board now, without modifying their current design and incurring additional costs that we would, we don't have time to do, actually, within the scope of their design. We could have the fixtures that they had spec'd before, now specify dark sky compliant fixtures for the roadway reconstruction in 2026. So if it's the board's desire to have us include dark sky compliant fixtures in the Lake Drive project that's being designed by WISSTAT, I'd request a motion on that now.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by President Mckay, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand?
Are the lights on Will, the, the lights on Wilson Drive are really new and they look like our old lights. Are they dark sky compliant? How close are they?
Not close at all.
Oh, because I thought, I thought that we had reached the understanding that the only, that the whole village was dark sky compliant, except for Oakland and Capitol.
No, I, I, I think the, the message that staff was trying to convey was that the fixture types lend themselves to percentages of dark sky compliant, but we do not have any certified dark sky compliant fixtures in the village. The, the residential fixtures have a relatively high percentage of dark sky compliance, but, but they're old, they're, they're not, they're not compliant. We could easily specify dark sky compliant fixtures in the Lake Drive project. We could also. We could also use that specification in the upcoming streetlight program replacement engineering for the entire village. So that at this point in time could very easily be done. That's just a matter of specing a specific fixture. But we, we do not have 100% compliant fixtures anywhere in the village.
Right. I understand that. And I personally, I'm not looking for 100% compliance. I want to know what it would cost. And I want to know what's the look going to be because I, we'll need to make a decision about what they should look like, right?
Right.
I mean, I think, what, if we can get something that, unless we hear a hue and cry from residents, if we go with something that looks similar to what we have, how close can we get to dark sky compliant at what cost? And if we go totally dark sky, what would that cost? So I, I wouldn't want to make a decision on that until I knew.
I, I can answer part of that question. The, the fixture cost at this point in time would be a nominal difference. You're specifying one type of fixture versus another. So in, in the scope of the, you know, 10 plus million dollars that, that you have approved in, in the terms of the larger residential streetlight replacement program, nominal difference. Cap or Lake Drive, also nominal difference in the fixture cost with a, a dark sky compliant model versus the, the type of model that we have on Wilson Drive. So I think the cost question is, is easily answered. I think the harder question to answer is what it will look like. I am by no means an expert. Spent a lot of time on this. Dan has spent much more. But my understanding, based on what I read in the pictures I've seen, a dark sky compliant fixture and a, and a corridor of dark sky compliant fixtures has a very different look and a very different feel than, than what we currently have in the residential areas of Shorewood. Which seems perfectly rational, right? We're, we're making a concerted effort to take that light and push it down in a concentrated fashion. Where right now, all of our systems have lenses that are open, not on the top generally, except Oakland and Capitol, but they're open all the way around and they have lenses that reflect, ref- refract, reflect and refract that light. So you have a bounce, which is by design. Dark sky compliant is, like I said, very different look, very different feel than our neighborhoods currently. In, in some communities, when they've looked at changing fixtures or, or looked at moving to a dark sky type model, they, they do demo projects. Often communities, when they move to an LED light system, will do a demo project just so that people have an understanding of, you know, what the differences are and, and, and how that feels and what that light looks like and, and how it spreads. So, you know, we could certainly look at how we might be able to provide that type of experience for the board and the residents. But again, I, I can tell you the cost will be nominally different, but the feel will, will be significantly different.
One other thing I'd just like to add is that with, when we look at dark sky compliance, Leanne's referencing just the fixture. So when we talk about Lake Drive and replacing it, replacing it with dark sky compliant fixtures, we are not accounting for redoing the lighting analysis on Lake Drive to see if and what poles would need to be removed potentially to also meet dark sky compliance. So one of the reasons why we want to check in with you about this now on the residential side is because we're putting out this RFP. If you are going to meet the strict outline of dark sky compliance, technically you don't have many new fixtures, right? You have existing fixtures. And, and so I just want to be clear in making that distinction because the RFP would be phrased or would look different if we were also having them evaluate whether we want to remove or whether meeting those lighting characteristics that they specify would potentially reduce the number of poles that you have in different areas. So if that, if you wanted to meet the, the 100% dark sky compliance, we would need to go through that exercise. And then I would also need to get your direction on whether you want staff to go back and also spend the funds to reevaluate the WISSTAT plan on Lake Drive, which would, could not be done logistically before construction of Lake Drive. And we would need to assess whether that could also be done for the North Oakland Avenue roadway replacement that's scheduled in 2026. So it's easy to swap out specifications for fixtures. It requires a different level of scope to evaluate compliance from those poles that are existing there in place. And so that kind of gets at the last piece of guidance that I'd like from the board because we would need to modify the RFP for streetlight, residential streetlight replacement tomorrow before that would be sent.
Okay. So thank you for that. And thank you for those questions. So to recap where we are, we have a motion on the table to swap out to as, to change specifications of light fixtures as they're being replaced to be dark sky compliant, which is totally different than meeting the, going for total dark sky compliance as a policy village-wide. So, which I'm not interested in us pursuing at this time without much more discussion. So, uh, does the board have further discussion on the motion that's on the table at this time?
Just one quick add. I would just say I, I'm generally in favor of on an ongoing basis, moving towards more dark sky compliance. And if that's what this motion is for, then I'm okay with that.
It is in that vein and pertains to the light fixtures on, that are within the scope of the Lake Drive reconstruction. Trustee Stokoprin?
What page is the motion on in the packet?
Good question.
Rebecca, you're muted.
I apologize. I don't know what page it is on the packet. I have the meeting memos in front of me independently. Does anyone have their packet up?
180.
Thank you, Toya.
Yeah. So.
Would you like for me to read them? Oh, sorry.
I had, I did find it. Thank you, Clerk Carol. Residential lighting, including Lake Drive, possible motion. I move that the staff be directed to include the specification for dark sky, dark sky compliant fixtures in the 2026 Lake Drive reconstruction project and the village's residential streetlight replacement projects.
Second.
So that's, that's the motion that I made, trusted, seconded by trustee Ursink, which is completely separate from the possible first motion under international community dark sky designation. So voting, supporting this motion or opposing it has no bearing on that other possible motion because it's not on the table. All right. Trustee Stokoprin?
So are we saying we should be one, like we're going to get multiple choices? Because from, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, looking at the images of the dark sky completely compliant fixtures. I don't know, will they look like the one? I mean, are we picking a whole new light fixture here that's going to look very different than what we have in the village? And are, so are you saying we need to approve more lighting studies then? Because the light will fall differently on the ground? And so we might have to move some poles? I thought we were trying to avoid that.
No, the, um, moving or changing poles is aligned with going for an international dark sky compliance designation. So the motion that's on the floor right now is just directing staff to include specifications for dark sky compliant fixtures as they're being replaced as part of the Lake Drive reconstruction and the light streetlight replacement program.
So, but it wouldn't be exclusively dark sky. Like if, if, if they come up with one, like let's say they come up with three models. One is dark sky compliant, one is 80%, one is 70%, and we like the one that looks like 80% because it looks closest to what we've had. We could pick that one. Is that what you're saying?
Director Bushlick has her hand raised. President McKay?
Oh, thank you. I didn't see that. Director Bushlick?
Sure.
Shed some light? Nope.
I, I will try. Pun intended. So specifically within the Lake Drive corridor, the, the WISSTAT and the State Architectural Society have already approved a lighting, a specified lighting fixture because it has to conform with the district's historical designation, which means we cannot substantially change the look of that lighting fixture. So it will look very similar to what we have now. In fact, the, the the hardscape, I'm going to call it, that's not the right word, but the actual metal portion of the fixture that sits atop the pole will look very similar to Wilson Drive, which looks very similar to the residential areas, but a little bit different. But, but that fixture will be modified if we, if we specify that it be dark sky compliant. It will have a very similar look, but the, the light itself will be compliant and the fixture, the lamp will be recessed enough in the top of the, in the, in the cap of the fixture so that it will conform with the dark sky principles. So we don't really get a choice on Lake Drive. And I would certainly recommend that we have the other residential areas of the village use the same specified fixture so that we have uniformity throughout all of the residential areas. So there, there won't be multiple options to choose from. We have already identified a fixture that looks similar enough to our current fixtures that most people, you know, unless they've spent a couple of meetings talking about dark sky fixtures, probably won't notice the difference.
And we keep our concrete poles?
Um, that will be something that we will determine within the course of the engineering for the, the replacement program. I, I would suspect so, but we're going to do a, a, a final evaluation on that in, in terms of durability and cost.
So does the state dictate this too, the post?
So the poles on, on Lake Drive will be concrete as they are concrete now.
So I mean, it sounds like we don't really have any choice. They're picking the fixture, they're picking the pole. All we get to do is say, do we want dark sky?
Well.
Really, let's face it.
You could summarize it that way.
It's going to be for the whole village because why would we pick something different for, you know? I don't know. I, if this is the way the State Department of Transportation works, it's like, here's what you get. Okay. Well, great.
Well, I mean.
We could come back to the. Yeah, we're getting a little fire field.
So if I, if I make this motion, we are.
We, there is a motion.
We'll be getting dark sky. So if I vote for, we're only getting dark sky compliant fixtures. We wouldn't, because you're saying that the cost is not minimal. We get one to choose from, right? One fixture, one element, one pole. And, but this, this only applies to the fixture, the element that will be dark sky compliant at the top of the pole.
Is. Yeah. I mean, you can answer that if you have more information, Director Bushlick, but I've, I think that we've covered this a couple of times.
So I, I would, I would confirm that that is a correct understanding. Because of the historical district in Lake Drive, we have, we have limits on what we can aesthetically change specifically related to the streetlight system. So, um, no, we, there really will not be a multitude of alternatives. The light, the replacement lights will look nearly identical, the, the poles and fixtures that are there now. You certainly have the option to have alternatives to consider in the remainder of the residential areas of Shorewood. It would be staff's recommendation that we keep a consistent look, but that's simply a recommendation. It's, it's always your prerogative to set a different policy course.
If there are no further questions from the board, I would like to consider, take a vote.
Trustee Stokoprin has her hand raised.
Oh. Trustee Stokoprin?
I do know that, I believe that in that memo that Chris Anderson forwarded, there were specifications about the Kelvins for Oakland and Capitol. And apparently those requirements for dark sky compliant could not be met in those fixtures. And I'm wondering if the Conservation Committee's feelings about those fixtures could be met in this corridor for Lake Drive.
I don't, I can't answer that question at that point. I think we will certainly determine that as a part of the engineering review.
I guess at this point, I'd like to defer until we knew that it, if we have considered the Conservation Committee's concern about Kelvins.
Dan, I'm sorry. Dan, are you able to shed any light on whether you believe the, the wattage at which the power to our streetlight system is delivered can harmoniously accommodate that lower Kelvin fixture?
No. They do not offer it. The lowest I believe that is offered is 2,700, which is pretty warm light. It will not be white. So it will not look like how they do now where it's like pretty candlelight. That 2,200 is pretty close to candlelight. 2,700 will be or just more, but closer to white. So like Wilson Drive is 4,000, that's pretty white. And if you look at what is on Capitol Drive, that is 2,700 to 3,000.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Trustee Arnder?
Yeah, I'd just like to call the question.
All right. Um, motion to call the question? Is there a second? Motion to call the question by trustee Arnder, first seconded by trustee Kudo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries to call the question. At this time, I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. In terms of international community dark site designation, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? All right. I don't see any hands and I'm not hearing anyone. So I'm going to take it to, that we are not interested in directing staff to begin a feasibility study in that regard. And then we did do, we took care of the Business District. So that concludes that item. And then we did do, we took care of the business district. So that concludes that item. Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to consider crossing guard memorandum of understanding and service agreement. Um, this comes to us with a lengthy background. And we have costs. Um. It's been reviewed and the recommendation is to um approve the one year memorandum of understanding with the uh Shorewood School District and a one year agreement for crossing guard services with all city management services as presented. Any questions or is there a motion? Kathy?
Did we, was there a meeting with, um, if I missed this, I'm sorry, with Saint Roberts about helping to contribute to this?
There was, and they declined.
Did they, was there a request for more uh coverage?
Not by them, no. The coverage remains, the coverage remains exactly the same as it has since twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Two firsts, is there anything? Oh, yes.
Did it go, was it about a hundred thousand? So it's I'm not, is it about a, did it increase by thirty thirty thousand now?
Twenty twenty five percent increase. It went from a hundred and four thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand.
And did we seek bids or are we just going with what we have? We, it seemed like we should go out for bids on this.
We can certainly consider that for future contracts. I know that that had been considered prior to my arrival in Shorewood and there was a a lack of interest. Um, as it stands, um, we reached out to all city and over the course of the last year, they've lost over six crossing guards, um, which is in part the reason for the uh increase to recruit and retain crossing guards. Um, they lost over six. Um, they hired several guards who no showed. So they're struggling as many other industries are in recruiting and retaining individuals.
Thank you. Um, trustee Kudo, I see you again.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the the breakdown of locations of crossing guards and um there's no crossing guard on on west, on Capitol Drive, west of Oakland between Oakland and Morris, yet there are two on um Capitol Drive in Maryland. Is there, is there a reason that there are no guards? You're the post office? Oh, you you cut out.
Oh, sorry. There's been, there's been, there's been uh guards on Oakland Morris historically in the in the past every year. So that might be an oversight, but but I I've seen.
No, no, I mean, no, sorry. I mean, I mean, Capitol between Morris and Oakland. So there's a guard at Morris, there's a guard at Oakland, but there's nothing in between in front of the high school or down by the the stadium or anything like that. Is there a reason we don't have a guard for in that in between area by the gas station or the post office? For students crossing for mid block, I guess, for lack of better terminology. I can't remember the name of the cross street, but it would be the post office.
New Holland Larkin, New Hollis or Bartlett.
So in there.
I can't speak to how the the posts were actually assigned and how they've how they've remained intact. Um, I can say that um I believe that high school students are largely responsible to utilize the crosswalk properly to cross cap, to cross Capitol and more predominantly concerned with school age children um crossing some of those intersections. Um, but unless somebody has some historical insight into specifically how the the locations were designated, I can't speak to it.
Trustee Baldoff?
Uh, yeah, I just a quick question. Um, I know that um Saint Roberts declined to contribute. I just wanted to clarify then. It looks like uh Shorewood School District's spring break is different than the Saint Roberts spring break. So under this agreement, are we providing crossing guards during times when Shorewood School District kids are not in session?
No, they, the cross Yeah, the crossing guards are specifically for the Shorewood School District. So there's approximately a hundred and eighty school days that the crossing guards are assigned to. Now, if um Shorewood schools are out, then there are no crossing guards, but Saint Robert shares the benefit when they're in school and Shorewood schools are in session.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Hopefully, uh, we can get them on board with us at some point in the future. Yeah.
We'll keep trying.
Thank you.
I mean, sorry.
Trustee Kudo.
I know this, the the in leadership at Saint Roberts doesn't want to pay for this service. I get it, but I mean, they're still students. They're still crossing the street. They're still kids. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't feel the responsibility to this, to the school. I feel it to the residents and the kids that are crossing the street. I mean, does it make, to me, it makes sense to pay for crossing guards when there's school in session. Um. Maybe I'm alone in that, but it just, it feels like the right thing to do.
With I would say um that if there is interest on the part of the board, um, then I would want to kind of kick this back to committee um to get the numbers on that. So if there's any significant changes that would have a fiscal or a an operational impact um that the board supports, then I would um ask that we defer it at this time. Trustee Lynn?
I I would just say with regards to the those school days, I mean, you know, I I certainly agree with you, trustee Kudo. I think though, um, you know, with regards to this contract, you know, those crossing guards, they they deserve their week of spring break off as well. Um, they're going to get a week off at some point. So, you know, stick with our schedule and just be sure to be very clear um to Saint Roberts, like that they're going to have to have some, maybe it's parent volunteers, teachers, whatever it is, they're going to have to kind of fill in that that timeframe. Um, you know, I don't want to leave them without a crossing guard, but also I don't want to mess this contract up for those people who may have their own kids who are on spring break and so on and so forth. That, you know, they need their their week off as as well. So just to keep it as the contract is written.
Is there a motion to um, oh, trustee Stokran?
Yeah, I I'm sure it's in here, but we're splitting it with the school district, right? Fifty fifty?
Correct, fifty fifty, and they've already signed the contract. They reviewed the MOU and signed the contract.
Okay, and I guess my feeling about Saint Roberts being in session when we're not and no crossing guards being there. It would seem to me that if they felt strongly that there was a need when Chief Worth was there asking about a possible contribution, they would have said, uh, we'd like more. Um, and they didn't. So um, this, this is the status quo. This is the way it's been done. And if they felt there was a a significant need, I I would guess that they would have brought it forth then. So I'll support this.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Uh, so I moved to approve the one year memorandum memorandum of understanding with the Shorewood School District and one year agreement for crossing guard services with all city management services as presented.
A second.
So.
All right. Motion by trustee Ursing, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, is there anyone in the public who wants to be heard on this? Not seen anyone. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Presentation of the twenty twenty three community survey results. Um, this doesn't require any action and it will be brought to us um by assistant village manager Anderson. We have a PowerPoint deck in our in our packet.
Just one item, President McKay, we have um consider resolution twenty twenty three dash fourteen community development block cooperation agreement with Milwaukee County.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Yep, nope, not a problem.
Okay. Um, so can you do a quick recap? This is a kind of a procedural item that we go through um to um notify or make the distinction that we are not pursuing um community development block clearance on our own, that we're doing it as part of the county. Um, and so this comes to us largely procedure, procedural, um, kind of through the ICC.
Correct.
So with that, I would make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by trust, uh, President McKay, seconded by trustee Arnder for any discussion. Uh, trustee Stokran?
Um, I just wanted to make sure I understand. We generally never get a any money from this, right? I mean, can anybody remember in recent history when we've ever gotten any money from this?
We used to um, uh, not for ten years or so, but we used to.
Thank you.
We actually don't have many eligible expenses. And so I think I can't recall what it was. Um, maybe it was the Senior Resource Center or something and they actually felt that um it was more of an administrative burden than the money. They spent more administrative time and fee um administering this grant than actual programming. So face my question. All right, seeing um if there's no further discussion, this will be a roll call vote.
President McKay?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to nine E presentation of the twenty twenty three community survey results.
Thank you, President McKay. I guess you were just ready to get to these results, huh?
I've been chomping at the bit.
Well, I'm just sharing my slides. And again, it's a very brief uh slide deck that I have for you all today. If I can get that to set up, I see it coming through now. Um, so yeah, um. As you're all aware, um, we did uh take care of the community survey. It was open from uh May eighteenth to June twenty third. And just a quick recap of some items, with this uh survey being open from May eighteenth to the twenty third, the first mention um of the community survey was in the village managers memo on the eighteenth and twenty fifth of May. And then again, we advertised it in June fifth, on June fifteenth and twenty second, uh, just as a reminder before it closed. Um, as you're also aware, um, we repurpose a lot of our village managers memo content for our social media posts. So this was also shared on Facebook and Twitter uh before Twitter became PAX. So um, we then also advertised this in the summer issue of Shore Today. Um, you'll probably notice in that article, though, we had a QR code and a direct link uh to the website uh to the village website where the community survey information was host hosted. Uh, so this QR code and the URL um actually uh, once it was clicked, went to a link where you where folks could see the dedicated space in the website where they were then uh sent to the Google form where they could take the survey. Um, over the survey period, we had nine hundred forty three unique page views uh which during this period of the survey being open ranked ninth in total page views on the website uh behind usual top performers of parking, paying bills online and property tax payment information. Uh, lastly, uh, to help do communication of the survey availability, we put together a postcard that was sent to all addresses, all addresses using the Shore Today mailing list uh of residents. Uh, just before we start my very high level uh review of the results, similar to how Tyler Burkhart did this in twenty nineteen, I just wanted to highlight uh some changes uh reminders of the main changes from the last survey. We did add a comment field after each section, which caused us to add about forty pages of content in the survey. So thank you for your patience with that. Uh, we had about a hundred and thirteen pages in the survey uh in the survey report. We also added questions on parking policy changes, and then we asked about uh the awareness of the DPW DPW facility replacement and relocation. Uh, moving along, we did have consistent perception ratings. Um, rather than, just before I get into all of these, this presentation of responses is grouped more by interest and not necessarily by how the survey was organized. Um, we do organize the survey uh by uh community perceptions first, and then we get into things like parking, shared services, infrastructure. So just following along how Tyler presented these results in twenty nineteen, I did want to follow how he grouped these by interest. Um, so yeah, and then we did, uh, before we get into what the three point two and everything means, the performance is displayed on a four point scale uh for excellent, good, fair, poor, where excellent equals four and poor equals one. Um, so again, we did have uh consistent ratings with uh general perception of the village where um all fell within a point three of the twenty nineteen results. The sense of community, reputation, uh, ease of walking, all performed very well. In fact, our number one response was ease of walking in the community. Um, and then schools you'll see as a three point four and opportunities to participate in community members, excuse me, community matters was a three point two. Regarding uh traffic and road maintenance, again, these are pretty consistent with how they performed in twenty nineteen, maybe within a point one or point two difference. Um, in twenty nineteen, I'll note that the road conditions was actually rated as the number one priority, whereas in this survey, um, crime and public safety came out as number one. So just that's a mark, a difference there. We also continue to have very strong rankings for uh village services. These are pretty much unchanged. I think they're almost exactly the same uh so from from the twenty nineteen results. So as you'll see here, EMS and fire services, front desk customer service, uh, library services all performed very, very strongly on this four point scale. Um, very similar to twenty nineteen, affordability uh was the lowest perception rating at a two point two. Um, the variety of housing options performed the same at a two point seven. Um, when we asked the open ended question of what Shorewood really needs is, um, we heard that uh affordability and lower property taxes were among the top five. Um. And I believe I already talked about number one. Maybe I'm getting into that. Uh, but moving along for taxes and affordability, sixty two point nine percent uh supported maintaining services. This is actually up six percentage points from the twenty nineteen survey. Um, getting into the parking trends and observations, again, very, very similar. I don't have a lot to report here. We did actually see the um we gained some points in parking in business district and parking instruction lots. Um, so we gained about uh six points in each of those. And then getting into the unique question in twenty twenty three for parking policy changes, the monthly overnight on-street parking permit uh saw that we had a just over a quarter percent reported a negative impact and forty seven point six uh percent reported a positive impact. Uh, new construction and multi, excuse me, new construction, multifamily dwelling from the one point seven five to one off-street parking space, we see a thirty one point three percent negative impact compared to thirty one point six percent positive impact. So really, really close uh responses there. I don't think I provided for you the numbers at the beginning, so I apologize for overlooking that. In twenty nineteen, we received seven hundred eighty one survey responses and in twenty twenty three, we received six hundred and twenty one. So we did have a little bit of a drop. But that's not for lack of getting the word out. I think that's why, of course, I wanted to start with the communication methods that we used. Moving along to the business district perceptions. Here's my number one response. So going to the third bullet there, when asked what Shorewood really needs is, this was also popular in the 2019 survey, but the number of responses for this made it number one, this, this go around. So folks are really interested in additional business options for grocery stores, additional restaurant choices. And I know the hardware store is a pretty popular, hardware store and ice cream is always a pretty popular response in the community survey. Going back up to the top here, business district redevelopment and quality of businesses performed pretty much the same as they did in 2019. So the infrastructure and public spaces question or section question centered around the folks, the community members' knowledge of the DPW relocation. And 66% of our respondents were familiar with DPW and 54% actually opted to receive project emails in the future. And we got about an 80% conversion rate from this 54%, 54% of the total population of folks taking the survey that said that they would like to receive project emails. And those emails have been shared with DPW so that we can start bringing folks more information after the survey closed. Very, very similar to last community survey in 2019, the Village Managers Memo maintained its top ranking for very valuable, as well as the Shore Today Magazine and the Village Website. The other portion of communication methods also asked folks if they were even aware of the methodology that we're talking about. And Shore Today was the number one response there. 99% of those taking the survey were aware of the Shore Today Magazine. Mailed postcards and the Village Website tied for second there at 97.7%.
Chris?
Ma'am.
Interesting that the manager's memo doesn't come up in the awareness rating when it's the most valuable. I mean, I'm trying to understand those two. You know what I'm saying? Trying to understand why the most valuable one wouldn't come up in the top three as awareness of? Or maybe, was it not in, I don't know. It seems kind of contradictory, you know?
Right. And again, that's an opt-in. And so I think the fact that everybody that is a resident receives the magazine, it's very visible, it's very similar to the postcards. So we do plug in the magazine and we plug from time to time on social media for folks to enroll and become engaged with the Village Managers Memo. Outside of it being included in the website as well, it is an opt-in. And for folks to be receiving that weekly newsletter, they have to provide their email address. So it is a valuable tool and does, I guess for the folks that responded that see it as valuable, likely receive it. But we do see that the awareness, I think, where folks know that the magazine's coming out, they know that they're going to see postcards, and then they of course know that our website exists. I believe that's probably why those receive the, the top scores there. But good, a good tool for us to consider how we continue to get the word out and build our engagement in the Village Managers Memo, because I think we're pushing on 3,000 enrollees that receive that weekly. I'm sorry. Would you like me to move, move along? Okay. Very quickly on demographics, I know that this also came up in the last community survey. I know Tyler talked about, and we could approximate what the response rate is based on our, based on our population. We do ask that households and not the population take the survey, but just knowing what we know about the number of of our population compared to the 621 responses that we received, it's roughly 4.7% of our population, which is a little bit of a decline from the last community survey. Something that I'm considering, mindful of for the next go around as well is how we do better at getting more renters and younger generations to respond. At least in the last survey, Tyler had a handful of those under 18 that responded to the community survey, and this time I had zero. So I'll think of maybe working closer with the school districts to make sure at least our high school students are aware. I mean, they, if they're not taking it with their parents, maybe they do take it themselves. So just thinking about how we can make that better in the future. The last bullet on here, it was very proportionate response rate based on the eight areas of the village. We had a cross-section or a map of the village that was split up into eight areas and it's really similar to what we received in 2019. I hope I didn't sail through those too quickly. That's my final slide. So I'll thank you unless you have other specific questions about the report or the slide deck.
Thank you so much, Chris. That's a ton of work to go through all those responses. Any questions or comments at this time?
Chris, any idea why we saw the, I mean, given so much was pretty consistent. Any idea why we saw the 6% jump with regard to maintain level of services? Did you see anything in there that may have suggested it correlated with some of the awareness around W site?
Very likely. That question I believe came after the DPW section, so I believe that could have landed. Why? Because again, the explanation for maintain services, you know, was very wary and we included, even if it means, yeah, so I mean, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Stokbrand has her hand raised.
I guess I thought it was also interesting too, they, they were concerned about taxes, but yet wanted to maintain services. So that's notable, I guess.
Yeah, pretty normal. Yeah, it is, it's disappointing that it went down, you know, between the number of responses this year versus 2019. I would have thought it would have gone up just because our communication and engagement seemed higher.
And maybe people are happy and they don't.
Yes, right, right. All right.
But we still, I still want the responses.
Yeah, and forgive me if I missed this. Did we get the raw data responses in a document or?
No. You did not, but I'm happy to share them with you. I can clean it up because a lot of my graphics and everything is really folded into my one data file, but I'm happy to share that or just the raw data with you if you like.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to have it if it's just in, if you can download it into an Excel sheet or however, whatever you export it into is great.
Sure.
That was helpful last time. All right. If there's nothing else, I don't think I see any other hands. We will move on to nine F, Consider Document Scanning Vendor for Property Files. So this comes to us after many years of getting to this place. Any questions? Or manager you all, would you like to add anything or call anything out at this time?
Nothing more to add, but I'm ready to get going.
Yeah, it seems like we've had a lot of discussion over this and it's been a pretty incremental process getting to this far. So I would entertain a motion or take questions at this time. Yes, Trustee Stokbrand.
So where does this leave us once we get, they will do all of the scanning? And then for the 48,000, that means we'll all have, it'll be digitized. And then what's left? I mean, what, will this be a way, will it link to our current website? So you can go on, put it in your address and find out all, all the building permits that were ever requested for an address or a tax key or how do we make it, how will it become usable to the public?
Sure. So we're still in the final stages of exploring how we're going to make it publicly accessible, this proposal. And it should be clearly noted, that estimate is 48,000. And it's an estimate because we don't have specific count on the different types of sizes. So that's one of the reasons why I'd like to get going is because I want to see what each batch generates as we send them off to them. So the 48,000 is an estimate. We're working on the public facing portable. You'll notice that there was an RFP for posting of the data itself. We're also looking at other options and how to make that data accessible. So you're gonna, by the time the scanning portion is complete, we will have identified what the public facing document retrieval will be and we'll have that back in front of you for review.
So would that be another contract, another vendor?
Potentially.
And is there any way to protect ourselves with a, with a do not exceed on this?
You know, similar to the one that we did for the minutes and scanning the last time, we generated an estimate. We spent more time trying to get better estimates than the documents that we have. You know, our estimate right now is 48,000. We don't have a way to get more specific at this time. It should be noted that the last time we did also approved the contract for minutes, ordinances and resolutions. We also utilized an estimate.
And how close did it come? Do you remember?
We are about $850 to the positive from where our estimates were at that time.
So like in construction, they typically have a 10% contingency. Can we just make this?
You know, I, I really, I'm hesitant and making any estimates based on these documents because we're working on large-scale commercial documents, we're working on individual permit sizes. The cost of scanning is dependent on size of documents. So our estimates are based off of just that, what we think is the average file size. But I don't have anything more specific other than that. Trustee Kudo has his hand raised.
Oh, thank you. I didn't see that. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'm, I move to approve at one of the estimated amount of $48,800 for phase two of document scanning.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Kudo, seconded by Trustee Baldoff. Any further discussion? I would just like to commend staff, you know, this is something that we directed that came from the board as an initiative and the amount of time and care and that's gone into this. It's, it's really a massive project and will be something that requires maintenance over time. So I'm impressed and thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And I believe we have one more item. Village Board Initiatives. 2024.
2024.
2024 initiatives.
Right. So we're in the process of recalibrating. In July, I came to the board and provided the list of initiatives that we have been collaborating on for the last six months of the year. Asked for board members to submit any new initiatives by July 14th. We did not receive any new ones. Before in your packet, you see the 2024 initiatives, which I believe are reflective of all of the the items, many of which we've discussed tonight to a certain extent. Within your packet, also included in that is the rundown of staff work plans that some of which support board initiatives, other of which branch out into other areas, but continue the work that we have to accomplish in 2024. Then in addition to that list, just to get you a flavor of what some of the volunteer groups are working on, we have their, their recap of where they were in 2022 and what they're looking to do in 2023 moving forward. As we kind of slide into, to what they have currently in the mix. I don't have any other items to report on in this time. But consistent with the annual planner, one of the things we do is we approve these lists as another step in the budgetary process. We, we work on the LRP, get the board's motions on that. But we then seek motions on the initiatives and then that also dovetails into how we plan for the 2024 budget. And I can happy to answer any questions.
Great. So with that, I'll take questions or a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the 2024 initiatives.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Kudo, seconded by Trustee Baldoff. Any discussion?
I think it's safe to say we have no shortage of things to do next year.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand has her hand raised.
Somewhat fluid and that, to, but to the other point, should we prioritize? Because obviously we won't get this all done. So we, do we need a motion if we want to change the board initiatives? As we, as the time, you know, situations develop? Much like we did with suddenly the street lights became an issue.
So one of the things that will happen is that consistently we're going to be bringing these back to on a quarterly basis. I don't know. They're listed right now, not in a priority order, but just based on how they've, you know, fallen in the chart or the Excel spreadsheet.
I guess I'd almost rather vote on them after the budget. I mean, it's July. Why, why are we voting on 2024 in July? I, I'd rather, after we look at the budget, we'll kind of know a little more.
So the, the initiatives help build the budget. The budget should be reflective of the policy and direction of the board. And so we've built kind of the annual planner and how we do our, our work from a financial perspective to be taken each at one in particular step. So because they can't all happen at the same time. We start with our largest movers, which is the long-range financial plan and how that rolls into our debt schedule. We then come back and solidify initiatives because many of those, some of which you've seen RFPs already roll out tonight. Not because we're starting the work. Well, staff is starting the work already in anticipation of these initiatives that the board has talked about, but so that we have an ability to execute those proposals and projects at the very beginning of 2024. Because if we don't, it's not likely that they'll be accomplished within that fiscal year and that budget year. So one of the reasons why we get this consensus from the group now is so that we can plan for them accordingly because that planning does start now. If we want to be ready to then move forward and implement some of the initiatives from the board within the fiscal year of which the item has been budgeted for. It also rolls in and plays into our borrowing schedule. So with the LRP, those initiatives that move forward, it takes, and that's one of the things that you heard from me on today, it takes about three months to accomplish a borrowing from beginning to finish and when funds are available. So we need to plan accordingly with those estimates to make sure that when those funds are needed for purposes of payment on projects that we have, that they're there and available at that time.
So well, how would we add? Would we consider getting a new village website going?
So one of the items that you see on the list has been the university program with the village communications review. And as you noted keenly earlier in the night, Trustee Stokbrand, we put a hold on making further modifications because we wanted to see what the results of that, of that review would be. because we wanted to see what the results of that, of that review would be. That was the last point in direction that was received by the board. That's an initiative we have on to conduct that review with that program in 2024.
And what exactly, I, I guess I'd like to see it moved up. I mean, we already went with Shorewood today, which, you know, that would be infected, affected by a communications review also. And work with Strategic Initiatives Committee on RFP and work plan, what is that?
So we have strategic initiatives. If you'll recall, we have a 2025 vision plan. And if you can believe it, we're coming to the point where in 2024 is the year of what you would update your vision and then have a plan that's approved and set into place for a 2035 plan. Does that ask, answer your question? I'd like to work with the committee on that proposal because it is something that we do only once every 10 years. That's a, 10 years has been the cycle that the village has put in motion prior to my arrival. And so I just want to make sure that I'm honoring that, that cycle and that vision. And I think that, as you can see from all the different projects we have in the mix, some of the work that we do in 2024 may very well sway our vision for how we plan for the next 10 years.
And so that's not something we do in-house?
No, I, I don't believe so. We don't have capacity to do that. They have also solidified room with a consultant to perform that work for the village, also to keep it somewhat independent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for getting me, giving me the opportunity to, though, to talk about that because it's something that Jerry is going to have a lot of fun with next year.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, well, I'd just like to take this opportunity again to, I mean, to thank the board for being so supportive with manager Ewald's leadership on keeping us on a really good work plan schedule, delivering on timelines so that we can be in the best and strongest position for our borrowing and for the RFPs and for getting the most competitive bids. And so thank you to the board for adjusting to these timelines and, and to consider this affirmation tonight that helps us move forward. So with that, I will ask for all those in favor of the motion on the table to support the, to approve these initiatives as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? All right, motion carries six one. All right, now, this point, we move into village reports. Village Managers Report. Let's see. You have the Police Commission Appointment. The memo is in your packet. Fill the vacancy left by Jennifer Anderson and filled with Joanne Lipasovik. Item two, Proclamation for Shorewood Little League has been asked to defer that as the Little League was playing in Indiana this afternoon, and we'd like them to be present. And then finally, I didn't put it, but the PSAP designation that trustee Stokian asked about in the Public Safety Committee meeting, that was actually shared in a village manager update, I believe it was two Fridays ago. So it shared that the, it's Act 26. The ICC designated Bayside as the designated PSAP for Milwaukee County for the foreseeable future. That will have no service impact to us as our services are already consolidated as part of the North Shore Shared Agreement. I will work with, the ICC will work with Bayside as far as an implementation timeline. This is, the designation really allows for drawing down state dollars to support consolidation efforts around 911 dispatch. As we are already part of a shared revenue agreement, or, you know, shared service agreement, it's going to affect us last. It's really going to start with a technology sharing and consolidation. Right now, Prophoenix has 11 different contracts within Milwaukee County. Having a designated PSAP will allow us to really remove that redundant business from Prophoenix and hold one contract. It doesn't mean that Bayside is going to take over all dispatch, you know, overnight. So it's going to be a very gradual process. We will have report outs at, you know, intervals once we see what the project timeline is like. It took a long way to get here, and it is impressive that the ICC came to an agreement so that we can draw down these dollars because there was a, that they wouldn't be, they would be stalemated, and then we would not, nobody in Milwaukee County would get these dollars. So it's a win. That's all I have at this point. Village trustees reports.
I've got one, trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Just, you know, I know that we, we're, we had a proclamation set for Shorewood Little League this evening, and unfortunately, we just couldn't get to it because we wanted all the Shorewood Little Leaguers to be present. And I know that we are going to work out something in the future where we could potentially read a proclamation to the entire team once they get back from Indiana. Unfortunately, today, they lost their second game, which means they've been eliminated from the Little League World Series. But I, you know, get chills thinking about it right now, how much Shorewood has been talked about on ESPN+, how much these kids walked around that community with pride wearing Shorewood on their jerseys, and how much our own community came together to support this, this team of Little Leaguers. It's things like this that, that really, you know, that really inspire me to, to continue leading in the community, and it inspired me that our community is, is in fact, one of the best around. The Shorewood Foundation acted really swiftly to come up with a $7,500 matching grant for Shore, for, for the team and the, and the kids to help offset costs, travel costs for the families, as well as lodging costs. And, and the, the community came out and matched that grant pretty quickly. It just goes to show you how we can all come together and support one another, and we can rally around, the community can rally around a thing like Little League, you know? And, you know, it's something that I've been involved with now for over four years, and I've known these kids since they were, they were very small and, and some playing T-ball. And to see them come this far, to play on such a big stage, couldn't make me more proud. And like I said, right now, I have just chills thinking about it. I was lucky enough to spend the last four days or the last, you know, week with them, essentially going from Wausau to Indiana and just sitting, sitting there in Indiana, hearing the announcers talk about Shorewood, hearing people come up to us, ask, ask us about Shorewood. And not only that, seeing the videos come through of the people at Three Lions, at Brathouse, at, at other various parties across the community rallying around this team. I mean, it was the most heartfelt, amazing thing I've ever seen. And I just, I couldn't say, I, I'm just so proud of, of all these kids and all these coaches and how they handled themselves on and off the field. And I cannot wait to welcome them home, and I cannot wait to give them a proclamation to celebrate their achievements.
Thanks so much. Other trustees?
I'm going to, I'm going to add a little bit to Arthur's. You know, having coached Rec, having had my daughter play Little League with all these boys for years, and having my own nephew be on the team that was just in Indianapolis. It was pretty incredible, having spent a few days watching games at the Brathouse, having gone up to Wausau myself to watch my nephew play. So I just want to say congratulations to all of them. And I'm going to take prerogative and say congratulations to my nephew Mason for having a heck of a tournament and a successful year. And I look forward to watching all of them smile while we hopefully get to do this in person with them in the next meeting or so. And I should say, my brother-in-law, Tim, one of the coaches, I'll get in trouble if I don't say him, too.
Family first. All right, anyone else? Village Manager?
No report.
Right. Future items of consideration? All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Has her hand up.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I was slow. May I?
Yes.
I would like to ask staff for the October, I'm sorry, September 18th COW on Budget Overview and General Fund Budget Metrics. I would like to ask staff to present a report about the current village debt. So we, I believe President McCaig mentioned something about in previous years, there had been something that showed the various debt issues and when they would come due, so we can sort of get a, a better handle on debt going forward, debt going back, and with an eye towards, you know, keeping, keeping the, the rating that we have. I know it's been in the news a lot now about, you know, some of the US debt rating going down with one of the ratings companies. And I think it'd be a good time for us, if we're looking at the huge infrastructure projects and public works, to get a full overview of our debt picture. So I move that we have a, a staff report on village debt on September 18th as part of our budget talks.
If that requires a second, I'll second it.
Rebecca, is that clear? All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll second it. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, who was the first?
Arthur.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned at 9:28 PM. Thanks, everyone. Have a good rest of the summer.
Good night.